Man, this is an active crowd this morning.
Yeah.
All right. Good morning.
Morning.
Welcome to our commission meeting for the first day of October. This year has flown by. First, Jess, would you mind leading us in the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, and evergreen, just as for all.
All right, Ms. Tyree.
So, right with the part I think. I have one refund, of course, needs to be signed in those places. And three orders to combine. For your office to sign this morning.
All right, go ahead.
I make a motion, we approve the exoneration.
Second, have a motion second on floor, all those in favor?
Aye.
Here's a little time first.
All right.
You look through these.
Yes, I write up every paper that hit your desk.
Thank you. Uh, I'll make a motion to approve the refunds.
Second, got a motion second before all those in favor?
Aye. Miss, what are we gonna hear?
Those are orders to combine, to consolidate people's property into one tax bill.
I make a motion, we approve the motion or make a motion to approve the combination, the, uh, to combine the land.
Got a second? Got a motion second on the floor, all those in favor? That's all for you. All right. Vouchers and invoices.
I'll look through these. Do you see anything, John, that you don't like?
I didn't see anything.
I make a motion, we approve the vouchers.
Second, got a motion second on the floor, all those in favor?
Aye. Invoices, did you see any more?
That's the invoices and payments.
No.
Okay, uh, I'll make a motion to approve the payroll for October third. Second, got a motion second on the floor, all those in favor?
I move that we approve the minutes for our meeting notes.
Second, got a motion second on the floor, all those in favor?
Aye.
I'll make a motion to approve the estate settlements.
Second.
Got a motion second on the floor, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Ruth?
Well, first, the financial statement. After approval, they show us to sign it. I did not print multiple copies.
Thank you.
I just said you should approve the financial statement, the proof publication.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the financial statement, the publication.
Second.
Got a motion second on the floor, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, next slide is the audit firm selection. So then we've got three members on our audit committee. So far, two, I think the scores are the same. Waiting on the third person. Can you guys go ahead and approve, select the high-scoring firm from that? So we can move forward with it. And then you can announce who the contract is. You'll have to sign the contract later, so.
Okay, so moved. Second, motion second on the floor, all those in favor?
Aye.
And then?
Nope. First Foundation.
Yeah, she, it's just a support letter. She's applying for the Western Union First Foundation grant. Do you have a copy in your pocket, John?
Uh, no, I do not.
There's, I did put one in, in the red folder.
So I don't know what all these apply for. I know.
I'll see.
I think it's to basically set up the new building, a lot of things like conference tables and that kind of thing. And I think there's not a match, so.
Not a match with his grant.
Can we get a copy of the, uh, letter and we'll hold one to that for later on? We'll just move it for later on in the meeting.
Yep.
Okay, number four?
Oh, that's it's a harm reduction, also support letter, I think.
That would be Ms. Harrow.
Yeah, I, I think you guys are, you're, you all are aware that several years back, legislation was passed that required the health department to be licensed through OFLAC for our harm reduction program, although we were just recently told we're not allowed to use the words harm reduction anymore because somebody doesn't like that. And so and we are now the overdose
and infectious disease prevention program. That's what we are.
But say, ma'am, would you, would you repeat that?
Overguise and infectious disease prevention program.
Yes, so, um, we are requesting that you, um, again, sign a letter of support, which you did in twenty-one. Um, we didn't realize we needed to update those, which I do think it's a good idea to, to update our letters of support. Any questions? We're happy to answer. Uh, we have an advisory committee for our program, for this program specifically, that consists of, um, both hospitals, community health centers, law enforcement, um, some of our participants. Um, we provide services at the health department throughout the week. We also go to Smithers, um, twice a month. And we go to Scarborough twice a month with our mobile clinic. And provide a full range of services, the testing, supplies to keep people safe, naloxone. Um, and every single day, we're taking somebody to treatment. They don't always stay there. Sometimes they do, and they, and it's amazing. And so, um, you know, we're on the ground doing the work and we're very proud of it. And so I certainly hope that we continue to have your support for that work.
I'll make a motion to approve the support letter.
Second.
Got a motion second on the floor, all those in favor?
Aye.
Will you send the, the
That would be nice. With, yeah.
Okay, number five?
So the Golly Bridge had requested funding for their town celebration.
Okay, staying consistent with the other funding, I'll, uh, motion to go ahead and approve that.
Did we, uh, remember the amount on it?
No, it's a thousand dollars.
Okay, I, I second the motion.
Okay, got a motion second on the floor, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Go ahead, Ruth.
So the next item as well.
Yeah. And today we have the DNR, Cory and Joel, are going to talk to us about at least possibility between the county as a park. I think it's a great opportunity to increase our fishing presence down there, make a better quality product for the park itself. Uh, so yeah, we're, we're looking at leasing the park down there. I believe you guys had a draft.
You're gonna lease the park or the pond?
The pond, had the park.
Okay.
Just basically, I think the way the, the verbiage is right now in the lease, it's all parcel, parcels, just the actual water pond itself. Our hope, our hoping is making a, a children class Q area, which is under special regulation from March first through May thirty-first. And that's kids under fourteen and licensed anglers, that whole class Q, which is the disability license. Um, fish is only allowed during daylight hours, do they fill up for trout? And other people can help bait and remove fish, but they can't actually be fishing with, while they're there. And, and doing this lease, we're able to get you guys on the trout stocking program. It'll be stocked once in March. And then I don't want to be with the, the trout, the fish derby you guys have in April. I have a, a verbal commitment from our hatchery folks to be able to supply trout for that as well. Um, the only issue would be if we can't technically restrict the public from fishing during that period, but it can be dissuaded. Um, you know, we do the same thing up in Conway, District City, say fishing derby and net, net and ban and all that stuff and can't stop people from fishing, but you kind of give them and not deal them. Um, so basically, what I'm looking for is a, a, a approval to enter an agreement. Um, obviously some language disagreement is negotiable. Um, if you guys have
True.
Certain restrictions or, or something you have, you guys want, but besides that, it's pretty, pretty straightforward.
Anthony?
Twenty-five year lease, you decide to back out of the sixty day notice.
Was it something that was like, we said sixty days one place?
That was, that was in the original, that's, I went back and looked at both.
Okay.
When the original had that provision, it had a conflicting provision, it was taken out and updated version.
Cory also has some great contingency plans for events that we do at the park. One that we mentioned earlier, the trout derby is kind of a special day, and that's the one day thing. But also like camp store using the pond, um, that's kind of, we, he has a, we have about like thirty pages before we do that contact you guys. Also, um, like the West Virginia Adventure Day, we do down there, the fourth and fifth graders. So there's a couple of plans in there where they've been really good to work with, understanding that park having this fishing program would be awesome, but also letting the park have their events to kind of go around it all too. I think it's a, a good point. Either.
And the only other thing to keep in mind, it can, it's gonna be limited. You, or children in class can get licensed solviers, so. Uh, did you say March first or the end of that?
Yeah.
So for three months, it will be restricted as to huge convention pond. But the flip side of that is, if it's regularly stocked, that's probably gonna increase, I would imagine.
If you also, we also have on list to get, catch, catch, we'll channel catfish, usually run it end of May, early June.
Okay, so, um, are, were there will be a license required to fish these ponds once they are stocked and the class Q period is over?
Yes, during the class Q period, you know, obviously children under fourteen don't need a license. A lot of times you're just, you know, people already have a, a lifetime license, they're senior lifetime license, but outside of that, they would need to be a licensed angler to utilize the water.
Currently, do we have that in place?
Currently, it's a private pond, so that's not a thing. But I do believe with the conservation issue with the, they're permitting and the reason why I think most fishing would be okay with spending the money to keep going and have a better, this can be a great, when you fish in there midsummer right now, it's a couple bluegill, maybe a catfish every once in a while or a bass, it's very minimal. It's, you don't catch a lot of fish there in the summer, so this will increase that experience.
Mission this lease will allow us to be able to go in there and survey it, potentially multiple.
Anthony, you saw nothing in the lease that would, uh, the, the commission couldn't fulfill?
No, if problems come up, there's an easy out, just have to get assistance. Somebody told me the trout wouldn't, they're off the ground. Couldn't say it.
But I would suspect not.
There's
That would be my guess.
There's an eagle down there that takes care of the trout as it gets warm and they start floating, you know, as they get, every year it shows up and hangs in the same tree and yes, yeah, it's
I'd say with trout, when the water warm, the trout, they, they don't do very well.
No, they usually about seventy-five degrees, starts tapering off and about seventy-eight, they're belly up.
So I, I noticed that Mr. Taylor has expressed interest.
He loves. He, he said trout and a big smile came in his face.
Red from here to here, I'll be there.
Did you make it, did you restrict it fly fish all the time?
I don't think we'll go that far.
I think it's a win-win for us. Uh, so I'll go ahead and make the motion to, uh, accept the contract.
Would you guys mind, uh, signing a letter of support too for the class Q regulation and do? It's, it's kind of being big, it's what, we enter a lease agreement, the way our, way our National Resource Commission works is there's essentially a one-year lag. So this, if, if we enter an agreement this year, twenty twenty-six year would be general regulation, there would be no restrictions on it. It's proposed to make it class Q for twenty twenty-six.
Seven. So our support letters for what? We support the DEP?
Well, we sort of, this is support, support the, the regulation, the children class Q.
Yeah. V and R. All right, uh, you want to amend that?
Yeah, I'll amend the motion to accept the, um, contract and support letter for class Q licensing.
Second.
Got a motion second on the floor, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So I'll print the one that I think you can produce.
It's the
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, um, LRA board appointment?
So originally it said, I don't know if it named any specific or did it, it said Harvey, it said Harvey, but yeah.
The, the way that the statute is written for the LRA, for whatever reason, they said in the very first, uh, appointments, you had to specifically name the individuals in your enacting section or enacting board. So it probably did specifically name somebody, but, uh, you don't need to advance the important.
So they can appoint the current assessor terror.
They can, yes. It, that, that provision was there has to be, uh, an elected, uh, a, a non-commissioned elected, uh, official, uh, on the LRA.
I mean, the terror, the terror's gone now. Did anyone talk to Tara that?
He do. I mean, that's this fact that
Okay, all right, good deal. I move that we appoint, uh, Tara Tyree to the Fayette County LRA.
Second, got a motion second on the floor, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, um, we're at nine fifteen.
So.
Um, Chris Patterson, Chris is here.
Chris, you want to come on up? Jess, we'll get to you here in just a second. Good morning.
Good morning. I just wanted to come by and just kind of introduce myself, uh, um, took over as, uh, Oak Hill City Manager and, uh, get to ground running, so I really haven't had a chance to get over here. What I expect in this quite big audience, I think the Summers County Commission Office only holds about four people, so. But, um, we, we want to do, uh, wherever we can to partner with the commission. Um, we signed an MOU at our last council meeting regarding the D-LAT money that's left over. Um, so we're excited to work with you all on any of those projects that we can, and, uh, I just wanted to let you guys know I'm available at any time. You want to, uh, meet and chat and talk about stuff in Fayette County. I'm still learning Fayette County, I'm a Summers County boy and um, just excited to be here and happy to help out and you can act in over here.
Well, uh, welcome to the area. Um, I, I've already talked to Senator Woodrum.
Jack.
Yeah, he, he should be on quite a few things, so, uh, anyway, but, uh, Oak Hills are, are largest municipality. Um, they have several programs going on, several projects going on, so, uh, you'll find yourself here right in a busy period for them.
Yeah, definitely.
All right, well, well, you have any questions?
Well, no, I don't have any questions. Mr. Meadows and I go back a long way. I mean, we, I, I go down to Summers County, I fish eight basketball, he's coached basketball, he's been down, he's run the city, I've seen his work and, and I think we're very fortunate to have Mr. Meadows in our area. We want to welcome him from one end of the New River to now the next, and which is us. So, we appreciate you being here, we want to work, the commission wants to work with our municipalities, we want to have a good relationship, we want to, if I see you walk in sit here or you call me, I, I, I look forward to speaking with you. I have no reservations, you can call me anytime. And I appreciate the offer that you've extended, that we can come speak with you as well.
Yeah, uh, I worked well with the commission in Summers County, I've heard familiar with Mr. Kula and, and several of the other ones, I was on several of their committees, uh, their dilapidated buildings and a couple of other things that I helped them with over the years, so, um, feel free to call me at any time and, you know, I, I'll pitch in and help out any way I can.
Has the transition been smooth with the family and everything?
It's been a, it's been a move, I mean, you're only moves an hour away, but, uh, yeah, it's, uh, you got still got stuff in boxes, so.
Well, welcome to the community and I, I hope you find it to your liking and we, we expect the same good job you did before to be done now.
I plan on it, I plan.
Thank you.
All right.
Nice to meet you, thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, uh, let's go back to, uh, Sheriff.
Getting this first thing out of the way. So we've been having issues with attrition, we know that, it's like every agency in state. Right now, we're running into a bigger problem, uh, state police has done a direct lateral transfer. And, uh, we're getting, still a lot of, a lot of counties, we municipal law enforcement officers from all over the state, so everybody's in a kind of a pickle right now. But I got a little bit of a remedy, work on our attrition and, uh, help us to keep people. Um, we had, we had four vacant slots at our department and they are already allocated and budgeted for in the, in my budget. Um, over the last gosh, many years, these four slots were added and Steve Kestrel shared. Um, we've had them filled one time completely and that was it, because it seems like as soon as you get ahead, you, you lose more. Uh, it's, so we haven't been completely full more than one or two months at a time. And every now and then we'll get one to fill one of those vacancies. So over the last twenty-seven years I've been there, we've operated with what we're operating with right now and it's, and it's worked. So what I, what I want to do is to relinquish those four vacancies and split that money among the thirty-two units that we have that's working here now. And it's already budgeted, it's not costing anybody anything. Um, and hopefully that raise and increase will help us with recruiting in the future, because that'll put us up over the rest of the agencies that yeah, we've been behind for so long and hopefully help us keep our attrition rate up moving forward. Um, we have thirty, we have thirty-seven numbered slots, you know, slots, however, there's only thirty-six. Um, forgot about this when we was doing the math the other day, unified the tire. So there's thirty-two units, well, if you divide that between those thirty-two, it'd be six thousand, six thousand two hundred and fifteen dollar entry slot on their year, your yearly salary. That's already in the budget.
So, we, we, do we need to, uh, to, to look at, uh, removing these from the slots or is it how we wish to do it in the budget, it's already been approved?
I mean, if you're moving money from one line item to another one, the county commission is to improve, I guess, is still taking funds that have already been allocated for salaries and it's just rearranging within that one item. The amount, so I, I don't believe the county commission has to approve it. I suggested to Jess that he come here, present it to the county commission, just in the interest of transparency and to give the commission the opportunity to ask questions, to give the public the opportunity to ask questions and just to be open about it.
Okay, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna put it to you thi- this way, Jess, I want to make sure that everybody understands. The amount of officers that you have now have been doing their job well and you have four positions that have not been totally full in quite some time.
That's correct.
So you're going to permanently delete these four positions and then take those funds and spread it amongst the people that are left.
I guess.
Okay, because those were already spoken for in your budget.
That's correct.
All right, and I got it.
When he's talking about the state police, I mean, there was a time, if you wanted to go to the sheriff's department of the state police, you had to go back down and go through the academy or start to and they came up with this abbreviated version, if you were already certified, which still required a couple of months.
Yeah.
And then here recently, what they're doing is if you're already certified, it's what, a two-week?
It's a two-week sit-in, direct lateral transfer.
So the roadblocks to anyone wanting to move from the sheriff's department to the state police or municipality to the state police are diminishing.
And, and the thing that that really hurts us on that situation is I could have brought the stats from this year already and through nine one one, the call volume, we answer ninety-five percent of the calls in Fayette County, I think is what it was, ninety-five point something, when I, when I broke it down. So our department is completely overworked with fewer people, so you know, I, I would like to see some of these guys stay for the benefit of our communities. I mean, they're the ones that, they're the ones that are ultimately going to hurt if we lose a bunch of people, because we're not going to have coverage.
Do we have people that are already telling you that they're?
We've had, we've had some apply.
Where's y'all left?
All right.
Scott Willshard of Oak Hill PD.
We've, we said they're in a class now, but this direct lateral, they're, they're starting after the first of the year, we've had, uh, we've had some apply already, uh, upwards to six, I think.
Okay. All right, so.
This may change their mind.
All he's doing is just like making us know that he's, he is permanently deleting four shifts and the salary for the, or the salary, the pay for the officers that are remaining will go up six thousand two hundred and fifteen dollars. That doesn't require a vote from us. Correct?
No.
Now, because it's just managed to
And, and I want us to be clear too, that does not affect the coverage that we already have in the county, that does not change anything.
Yeah.
We've been, we've been dormant in that area for, for quite some time.
Okay. I, I would like to say that we're, we're not gonna, we, we respect our state police, we respect and we appreciate our state police. But, uh, you know, our state has to understand that we're a little biased. We, uh, we have to take care of the county and the county first and we're, uh, they've made a move to take care of their, 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 their troops and, and we have to maybe adjust to take care of ours. It's not a, it's not a, a, a war, it's not a versus, we're not, we don't want to end bidding war, but we want to do what's right for our deputies.
Well, and it's not a, it's not a battle of agency or position, it's inevitably, we're here to take care of the public.
That's correct.
And that's our priority on both sides of that fence, so it doesn't matter what color uniform you wear or, or what you do, it's, we're responsible for taking care of our citizens.
And I appreciate you saying that Sheriff, because it is important to work together, it is important to have cohesion and it is important, so yes, this is why we have made the decision to take care of our, uh, people and we'll see what, where, how it works out Sheriff.
I would like to add this, uh, or let this, if it's possible, to kind of be retro on this and maybe start it effective September twenty-eighth.
First since five years.
Yeah.
Can, can you do it, Ruth?
That's a pretty problem, it's a good idea.
I have no objection.
Okay, all right.
And I got one more thing and I'll leave you alone.
Right here?
The vehicle, yeah, um, the Board of Education started a new program this year, so that's a first responder law enforcement program that's done to vocational school, it's really, really neat. Um, we got a retired deputy teaching it. They've got a lot of equipment that they teach, Steve Neal. They've got a lot of equipment that they've been able to get them, uh, he's doing a great job. I've talked to their, their principal over there and they said he's, he's absolutely killing it. Um, what I want to do is we get some of these spare old vehicles, high mileage that we're not putting on the road because they're unsafe to put a, a police officer in to work twenty-four hours a day. Um, I would like to donate one of them to the FIT program. Um, I'm gonna, if, if we can do this, I'll take the pertinent equipment out of it, that we need to keep the radios and such, uh, the lights and stuff don't matter, they're specifically to those vehicles, so they, they would want to use them anyway. Um, I've talked to Steve and he would like to have something like that to use on campus only to teach kids proper way to do traffic stops and how to deal with people and vehicles and things like that in, in their curriculum of the program. So he's already talked to the, the mechanic program at FIT, talked to their instructor, he's willing to go through the vehicle and set it up for them. Um, they're going to take the decals and stuff off and re-strike it with the FIT program and, uh, I think, that's what it I think all we'd have to do is, if, if it was approved to get with the it's another county entity, just transfer registration. I think.
Well, that would be
And, and I'll go down, I'll go down and get with Brian and we can figure out which vehicle is best suited to, to give to them that they can fix and make operational for them to use in this program. I think it'd be a really great idea and and good for us to help a program like that, if they're trying to recruit kids in first responding, law enforcement, firefighting and EMS in this area. I, I think we need to help them too when we can.
I agree.
So the, the, as the program is set up, the, the vehicle never leaves the complex at Oak Hill Hospital?
They'll take it. I mean, it'll be just like a, once the county registers it, they'll have their own insurance and stuff on it and they have to take it to VOTEC for its maintenance, just like they do the driver's ed cars. And it fall under the same thing as that would.
They'd have to get fuel for it somewhere.
Yeah.
Well.
But it'll be the instructor, he will be the only one, we've been talking about this, I said, I, once y'all get it, I don't care. But their plan is for him to be the, the vehicle operator at all times, so.
Do you, do you see any liability on the county for that?
Me to transfer. Those, I'm assuming it's supposed to be the Board of Education.
Correct.
Okay. But we've talked about the, the vehicles that you had out there and, you know, we looked at some of your vehicles you've taken out of service and probably, well, we did, we, we, we pushed ahead early purchase of new vehicles because of that very need.
We got in trouble, yeah.
Yeah, so we, we, we don't want to put them right back out on the road and say, well, it was not, not good enough for our deputy, but you can do it.
Yeah.
All right, then, uh, I will make a motion to, um, start the paperwork for the donation of vehicle to the Board of Education.
Second.
Got a motion second on the floor, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Jess, appreciate you.
Thanks.
And the officers too. Um, National Park Service Um, National Park Service request for support letter and land.
Yes, this is Andrew Steele with the National Park Service.
Okay, go ahead Dan.
Andrew.
Oh, Andrew?
Yeah.
Yes.
Andrew Steele, I think we got it right here.
The, the letter, if you're going to sign it, but go ahead.
Okay, go ahead.
So they are asking you, well, Allison's not here. I think the bulk of the question was, is this a voluntary surrender? From the property owners to the park service?
Is, is the gentleman still online?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, you want to, uh, explain what we're doing here?
Okay, yeah, in the, in the past, we basically sent a, uh, uh, I don't, I forget the term, but it was like a letter of no contest. If, if you didn't have a problem with us acquiring a property, then you just didn't reply. They started a new policy this year that when the federal government's purchasing property, uh, with the park that, uh, the county and we, we've also sent letters to the state for all our acquisitions now, uh, from the governor's office, uh, res- and we have to get a, an actual response, uh, from the counties and the state that they acknowledged, um, they don't have a problem with us acquiring the property. And all of our acquisitions are willing sellers. Uh, I think these, part of these are, um, I'm not sure which one you're, uh, I want to say there's two. Um, we're looking at properties with, uh, Purvis Major, uh, he's contacted us with an interest to sell. And then the other one is a, uh, a property that the state acquired from the Nuttall family, uh, for a parking lot, uh, out at Endless Wall Trail.
All right, so you had willing, willing sellers on both?
Yes, sir.
I see one, one is ten acres, correct?
Yes, that's the, I believe that's the property out at, uh, Endless Wall that, uh, the state currently owns. Uh, they acquired from the Nuttall family and developed a parking lot on. And then, uh, they're transferring that property with the parking lot to us, uh, to expand parking on, um, that road, uh, with the Endless Wall Trail, uh, to expand parking.
So that's ten acres on Edmund Road that, uh, has parking currently, but you're going to extend the parking for Endless Wall and the, uh, to meet the traffic demands and the, and, and the demands of, of the usage of the trails?
Uh, yeah, the, the parking lot's already been developed by the state. Uh, so we, we had a small parking lot at either end of the trail. And then they acquired the ten acres from the Nuttall family, they built a larger parking lot. And in conjunction with us, developed a trail connecting it to our trail. Um, so it's, and it, it's gonna become the primary parking lot for the Endless Wall Trail.
State owned, okay. Now, the hundred and forty-eight acres, the second piece of property is a hundred and forty-eight acres. What's planned for the hundred and forty-eight acres?
And I'm, I'm thinking it, in the letter, is this the one that lists, uh, as Gary one oh four fourteen?
Correct.
Okay, um, yeah, this is the basically the, the mountainside property adjoining, um, Purvis Major's Confluence Resort. Uh, it's, it's the property within the proclamation boundary of the, the Golly River National Recreation Area, um, near the confluence of the Golly and Meadow Rivers on the Fayette County side. And it's currently a forested tract and it, it will remain as a forested track. There is the, the old rail grade that runs through it. And so other than potential trail development, um, there, we don't have any other development plans, it will, it will stay in a, a forested state.
Okay, the, uh, the one oh four thirteen, you guys already own that?
Um.
Adjacent land right, right below.
Adjacent to the one oh four fourteen?
Probably, I'm, I don't have the map in front of me, let's, oh, just perfectly attached, if I go down. Yeah, there, there's several tracks in there that actually Purvis owns, um, the one oh four oh five, the one oh four fourteen, um, and are basically everything that, um, that Purvis is willing to sell. Um, it's probably gonna be done in two separate acquisitions. Um, the, the one oh four seventeen, uh, that's the part that we currently, one of the parcels in that area we currently own. There, we own the property to the north of it also.
Well, on the map that you provided, or someone provided.
It's theirs.
Okay, so it shows the one oh four fourteen is in the middle of all these other properties, so one oh four oh five, one oh four seventeen, one oh four thirteen. Do you own all of those other, the one oh four five, one oh four seventeen, one oh four thirteen?
Uh, let's see, now I see the bigger map, um, we own one oh four seventeen, nineteen, um, uh, six. And then Purvis owns fourteen, five, twenty-six. I think there's another one in there. But those are, so the, the ones that are shaded dark green are the properties the park currently owns.
The only one you didn't match, mention was one oh four dash thirteen. Do you own that currently or does Purvis?
No, that's actually owned by Ace.
Oh, okay, American Canadian.
Yeah, um, our intention is someday to acquire that.
And right now you're saying it's just wooded forest?
Um.
Well, I don't see a tech button.
And are you gonna leave it as wooded forest or are you planning to do construction on it?
No, we, the park service, um, doesn't normally do any kind of, you know, we don't do big development, anything like that. And especially in this area, um, the plan is to, um, there might, we might develop a, a, you know, a parking lot trailhead on the, uh, you know, the outer edge of it up on top. And then, but primary is gonna be a, a trail following that. Um, the, the one oh four oh six that goes through the middle of one oh four oh five, um, is the old rail grade, the abandoned rail. And that would be our intention is ultimately to, to have a trail, uh, through that area. And then there's also an old state road that goes down to the confluence, um, of the Golly and the Meadow, it'd be near that one oh four twenty-one. Uh, there's a historic, um, property down there, uh, essentially it was the, um, Patterson Home Place. Um, was the ancestor of Carnifex, uh, ran a, uh, boarding house and ran the ferry, uh, down there. Uh, so we would probably, in conjunction with the trail system, we would put in an interpretive, you know, information about the historic site. But the, the primary use is gonna be tourism, um, hunting, fishing, uh, for folks that you know, would be coming in on, you know, either, more likely it'll be a, a hiking bike trail.
Okay, well, I'm looking through the packet for a, from a letter from the, uh, seller that says that they're a willing party to this purchase.
Um, yes.
I, I, I don't see that. So until we receive a letter from the, the person that owns the property that says that they are a willing seller, I, I'm, I'm just not willing to, to say yes, you can take some more property that the county's receiving taxes on.
Okay, yeah, I'll, uh, I'll take that back and, uh, and we'll see if we can get that.
One, one, one other thing, and, and I, uh, we don't want to prohibit things from happening. However, you know, Ace is owned, Ace owns property that would have joined to the property of purchasing, uh, the property your, your potential, potentially buying. Does Ace have any objections?
Not that we know of, we're actually starting, uh, negotiations with them on, um, quite a few of the tracks that they own on the Golly. And so there'll be future.
Sir, let me.
These similar letters.
Is the United States government willing to pay us for the taxes that we're losing? I can answer that question for you right now, no. And, uh, I, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna say that if you want to bring this a letter that says that these people are selling, are willing sellers, then we will relook at it, but right now at this time, uh, I'm not willing to continue this conversation.
All right, um, yeah, I would like to, to set up a meeting, uh, possible with our superintendent with you all, so he can, um, when we're, uh, back in, uh, operation and, uh, and have a bigger discussion on this for future.
Okay, you can contact our administrative assistant and she'll, uh, contact us.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
So the last two, if you want to weigh, go ahead and move forward, so.
Let's, uh, let's do those two. Oh, what's this one?
That's the one for Teresa.
Oh, okay. All right. Okay, so this is for the, the new property?
It's a grant, it'll basically hopefully furnish a lot of that, you know, the Western Virginia First Foundation grant.
All right. We'll look at that, Greg.
This is a, a grant for?
The new DRC facility.
New DRC facility.
It'll help furnish a lot of it.
Make a motion, we approve the grant.
Support letter.
Support letter for initiative grant.
Second, got a motion second on the floor, all those in favor?
Aye. Okay.
Brief bid opening, Angela.
It's gonna be really hard, really hard. We might be here, you know, another hour or two.
Yeah.
Always, these are the some properties that are in the bit of the server. That's their process some. And now in this bid opening, it's only one.
There's only one?
It's only one. Um, but now in this bid opening, before you guys make a motion, it, it has Anstead's property they're requesting for the next item. So just to let you guys know.
Well, where is, um, I see he is here.
Yes.
Um, why don't we go ahead and, and, um, let the mayor go first and then that way.
Well, what, so just to let you know, at the last meeting, you guys put it off until we got a price.
Okay.
So that, that's just fine, yes.
I remember them.
Yep.
All right, this is from Empire Savage.
Next.
We've used them before, we know that they're qualified and have their certifications in. The total is sixty-nine thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. And that is for the entire list.
All right, um, so Mayor?
Yes.
We'll let you go and then we'll make the motion or?
So here's, just so you know, um, for the mobile home and the two-story, I'll call it a house, that quote was fifteen thousand. So that's what he's requesting, so just so you guys know.
Come on, Mayor, probably more.
Thank you for your time, appreciate it. Uh, we have acquired, uh, the total of properties, uh, the land adjacent to our, uh, I asked to count part. Yeah, your assistance, uh, put a lot of money into it in the last year with the, uh, venting up, so we're very, uh, generous and donated to us. We also along that same road put in about fourteen thousand dollars worth of offers dropped in let us to expand the side of the road for parking. We purchased this for ten thousand dollars total with the donation on their parts. Uh, and basically what we'd like to do is just take these two structures down and create parking lots, uh, adjacent to our apartment.
And this was included in that bid?
Yes, yeah, it was, um, included, that way he'd have.
In that, in that, yeah.
A little history goes, we've had constant over the last four, four years that I've been in office, been evicting people from here that are, uh, you know, breaking into the facility and staying there. Uh, this will be able to allow us to, to get rid of all we think is a lease property as well.
I don't. Twig, you got any problem with that?
He's the one that's almost the evicting.
John, I got no problem with including them.
Okay, so, all right, thank you, Mayor, we appreciate you.
Appreciate the power.
Okay, um, it looked like all of them were six, sevens and eights.
Right, except Anstead I put in.
It's hard, you can't, you can't rate that one.
Okay. And I don't see any issues.
I'll make a motion that we approve the Empire Savage to take care of the problem and, and for sixty-nine thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars, continue on.
It's pending that they have the document.
Well, the documentation is provided. You have, you have anything?
Um, we're going to take care of the property in Anstead, you should probably vote to approve the use of the re-grant money to take care of that property's Anstead as well.
Okay.
Specifically.
All right, so there would be two motions then.
The first motion is to take care of all the properties listed except for the town of Anstead.
Okay, I'll second. We have a motion second on the floor, all those in favor?
Aye.
Second motion?
Second motion, I, I move that we, um, include the town of Anstead, eighty-seven long town, long, log town road to be, uh, the, the, the properties to be taken care of by Empire Savage.
Using the.
Re- using the refund money.
Second, motion second on the floor, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. All right. Um. We are at, uh, where? Okay, um, Chris is here with, to, uh, give us information and then after the information, we can go into seconds.
Yeah, I don't know, the other guy will cheer us up. Of the mess.
Yeah.
I don't know.
Chris, I'll, uh, you know, I don't know where the rest of you are at. I mean, the rest of your body has gone, so.
Oh, I know the place to be, he said, if he didn't need to be here, he wasn't gonna be here, so. It's just another date really, that you guys authorized us to go ahead and do the survey. We went ahead and, uh, got boots on the ground, got it taken care of. That's what the final blast will look like, that the lease would be written off from. Uh, the only addition to this is, uh, Imperial had asked for that existing road to be relocated. He likes for, he wants me to put a statement on there that it'd be a fifty-foot wide right away, which it's shown as a fifty-foot wide right away. So there won't be no, no issues. So that road, I, I guess you can see where I'm talking about, it's this guy right here, going up to the property line. The way that's gonna be written in the lease, that's gonna be kind of, uh, it's not gonna be written in, in stone. Once we get the site built, there will be a road, it'll go to that upper site to the less lethal area. And then that road will just continue past it. They'll build it if they ever go in there and do any future logging or anything like that, so. And then that road will just continue past it, they'll build it if they ever go in there and do any future logging or anything like that, so. It's not, something's gonna be hard stone, it can be moved as needed for field conditions, they just need the right way to get logging. If there is any future logging, but it's, it's just been logged recently, so it's, yeah, it's probably like another fifty-plus years before it being, you know, it's already sold, yeah.
So we, we will have to upgrade that road going in, but we don't have to upgrade it to.
Pasture, pasture site.
Yeah, okay.
It's just, yeah.
And then in the future, if, uh, Imperial Collaries or, uh, the, the Westlake would like to timber, then they would upgrade the road at their expense.
Yes, and then they would, you know, they restone the road or whatever through the areas as needed for.
Anything grainage.
Yep, absolutely.
Twig, you got any objection to that? Twig has worked, for the, for the public's knowledge, Twig has worked really, uh, hard on this, and so has Mr. Burford, and we appreciate your work. I mean, what you've done and the time and effort you've put in it to benefit our county. Well, then Chris, we appreciate Chris. His, his efforts, and we, and we still appreciate your effort, and your dad's too.
Michael, any questions on this?
No, uh, and so let me just take a real quick minute, and so now that we've got the survey done, um. We got a draft deed, uh, cause actually they've agreed to actually deed the property over to the county. Um, with a reversionary clause that if it's never, if it stops being used for this purpose, it will revert back to the original owners. And so we got basically the, the outline of the, uh, uh, deed prepared. Now that we have this map, this map was gonna be a, uh, an attachment to that, and then we'll do that and get a property description. Um, I work with Mr. Burford's. To, to, to get a property description that input into the deed, that won't take very long. Then, you know, probably next meeting or the next meeting after that, we'll have the deed ready to be executed. Uh, and it voted on by the commission to accept in, um, and all of that, so we're, we're just about.
I have a survey description already typed up, so you can.
That's, we just need this finalized map, so I think he, he was at, I think Mr. Riston said he was gonna ask for the change, was that the?
That, just putting that, actually stating a fifty foot, it says it in, in the survey description, but it didn't say it on the map, so they asked for.
So, well, yeah, we'll get that, and then so we're, we're like basically at finish line for acquiring this property. And again, it will not, it, now it's going to be an actual acquisition, not a lease. Um, and so that's excellent, we don't have to worry about, you know, potential renewals or anything like that, it, it'll be owned by the county. Um, and it will continue to be owned by the county so long as there's, uh, it's used for this training, uh, sheriff, uh, law enforcement training purpose. So, we're, you know, probably a next meeting away from signing that document and beginning. Yeah, yeah, I mean, we, he's got the information, he's got the map, we'll just, it's literally just attaching that. Description that he has into the deed, um, making sure Riston's group's okay with it, uh, which they are, they prepared the deed. And we, we added just very mild changes to it, uh, so, yeah, we're, we're like, you know, probably next meeting. Be able to sign the documents, get it filed, be on our way.
Yeah, soon, I mean, I just wanna get in front of you guys, let you look at it, make sure you're happy with it, and then we can sign it, and we can email you the. Uh, PDF of the, the signatures on it and the word document, which is every description, and then you'd be good. Sure.
Twig, anything from you? So you're happy with the way it looks?
Oh, yeah.
Well, from the public's knowledge, what this is, we're, we're proposing a shooting range, uh, just outside the, uh, city limits of Anstead, and this is just outside.
Right.
The city limits, correct?
Yes.
That we are gonna provide for our sheriff's department to train, to qualify with their, with their, their weapons and, um. Have classroom setting trained also, it's, uh, twelve acres, is that correct, twelve acres? And, um, we've already done the, the survey, the survey's been done, the agreement is close to being done. And at our, our next meeting, we will disclose the, the contents of the agreement, right now, we're just. Moving forward, and I appreciate both of, of your hard work and effort, and, and Mayor Pride More yourself, you, you basically kicked this whole thing off. And, uh, but people have, have all contributed, but we appreciate you to take care of our, our deputy sheriffs, that take care of our county.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Let's see here, we don't know about, uh. Major Reyes, if he's here, did we, did he?
He was supposed to be, but he had the shutdown.
Yeah, with the shutdown coming and stuff, okay, um, but at this time. I will move that we go into executive session. To confer with our attorneys. Um, right now it's nine fifty-seven. Welcome back to our meeting, we just come out of executive session, had a, a discussion with our attorneys, and no decisions were made. Uh, so we're gonna continue on with the meeting, uh, I'd like to bring up Major Reyes, who's in, uh, he's gonna tell you everything that he's doing.
All right, uh, good morning, uh, the MEP's commander over here in, in Glengyde County, and, um, I believe I'm the senior active duty member, uh, on our part, which is. Currently means that we're working on IOUs, uh, starting today. Um, the main thing I just wanted to do is come over here, introduce myself, cause I'm definitely y'all area, and I'm just servicing, um. Applicants coming in from your area, share us a couple of things about the ASVAP, and I did have a couple of things I wanted to hand out. All three of you, which I am assuming one, she's nothing to say, but. Uh, wanted to share a.
Oh, wow.
Little coin, um, it's a major weakness here for her, um. Justin, how, uh, all branches of the military were including in the area, and we just. I saw that my predecessors had not taken the time to come out here, introduce himself, and let everybody know that, uh, we're out here, that, uh, we're open for business. Um, these pamphlets, um, the main thing, I'm, I'm, it's not as much as, I'm not sure if to hand it to them, they passed over, um. More, more, I know you guys see a lot of people coming in, asking about education benefits and all that good stuff, the ASVAP. Is not only a test to have you join the military, but it's probably the best, uh, career finder we have out there, um. And I say we're, we're leaps beyond what ACT is currently doing, and it's just an option that not everybody's looking at, um. As we all know, not everybody is meant to be a doctor, an engineer, an astronaut, um. The test won't guide you towards into the military, yes, it opens jobs into the military, but it does give you a very well career path, um. I just wanna make sure the voice gets out there, cause I'm not here recruiting, I'm just giving options, and, uh. I did have one minor ask, um, an inspectable item that we have is, um, to share the local anti-terrorism plan, so if anybody can. Um, if there is one in existence, it can be sent to me one day, I can just get that check off my blog and, um, take care of that. Beyond that, um, here are any questions and or, um. Any idea or, or anything you wanted to throw my way?
Our, uh, our plans and everything go through our emergency coordinator, and. His name's Jack, and he's at our nine-one-one center. And Ruth, can you get those two informations?
Yeah, I'll send it to Jack, he's in Chinese or British, they, something, they, uh.
No rush, it's just, um. You know, some red, I wanted to take off while you're on our side.
Well, we appreciate you coming in, um, in the time that I've been here, we've never had anyone come in and introduce themselves. Uh, it makes it nice, we can put a face now with the name when we hear it. Jack would be your main contact for the county, along with Ruth, if there's something that we can do to help you, please reach out to us.
Absolutely.
Um, Jack does majority of the planning on any type of an emergency, uh, thing, maybe meet out at the nine-one-one center.
On, on that side of the house, um, I just have the inspectable item of having the local plan, cause the plan for us is. Accepting situations like the current one we're currently in, any emergency weather, they'll like, just shut down, uh, but on this one is work under the IOU. But I just need to have a, a copy of that up.
Okay.
Major, would you mind if I would stop by sometime, and, and I've got your number here, uh, is your number on the card?
It definitely is.
And, and I would announce myself, but I, I'm, I'm very familiar with where your, your MEP station sits. And I haven't been up there as of late because of, you know, respect, you just don't walk in and say hello, I'm the, you know, but I would like to come up and maybe speak with you. Go through some of your facilities and just, just, just.
Absolutely, one hundred percent.
Bring together us to the county.
Hundred percent welcome, uh, if you want to, uh, want to see a busy day, the day we get the most applicants is Tuesdays. Um, if you want a day that we can have more time to sit and chat, it's Fridays, um, but any day, um, is definitely welcome, uh, for me, I have no. Um, I do like the announcement, just to make sure that I'm there that day.
Sounds good. Well, and, and, and we do appreciate you being here, and I see your airborne.
Uh, I don't jump out of planes anymore, but yes, that was, uh.
How about jumping off bridges?
Um, oh, I can't, um, headbag surgery, I can't, uh, can't do anything of that.
Oh, now come on now, you, you look like a good base jumper.
I can't do any of that anymore.
Well, I would see where you're airborne, appreciate your service, appreciate your, your, your involvement with our community, and that's what, you know, when I, if I would come by, it would be just. Just to see what you guys have there, how you, I, I, I'm familiar with some of your, your, your soldiers that work there, uh, their local area, and, uh. I would like to stop by.
No, absolutely, just, just let me know, and, and, and we're willing, uh, most, definitely willing to help you, I'm glad you said about visiting. I was reached out by the office of the governor, they did say that he wanted to come out and visit as well, I have not gotten a date, but if, um. Since I gave you my card, if I have somebody's contact info, I wouldn't want them coming in without, um. Y'all knowing, uh, or, or even probably be impressive, cause, uh, y'all probably could do more with him than, uh, what I can do, cause I can do the dog and pony show, and y'all can actually have the. Proper moment to, hey, we need this, this, this and that.
Major, you've probably been through more than I've ever thought about, you've been well-trained and you've evidently done the correct thing. Uh, we appreciate your service, appreciate the comment, the saying that we can handle that, but I think you're fully capable of handling, handling the governor.
Well, no, on that part, I definitely can, but you know, um, I, I think it's just, uh. Y'all could get more benefit out of him than I could probably, uh, get in the area. Cause at the end of the day, um, if he proposes something, I gotta shoot it up, y'all can probably have something solved, that's why I would definitely want, um, the involvement, um, when, whenever he does.
We have no, we have no problem with helping, that's what we're here for, we're here to work together, and that's what we require, we, we ask, we ask, we just all work together, try to do what's best for the county.
Same here.
All right, well, thank you again for coming in, we appreciate it.
Hey, no problem, and, and y'all have my contact info and anything you'll need, uh, feel free to, to definitely reach out.
I will send you a text and, and have my name and information, that you will have my personal service, anytime you need us, you, you give us a.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Y'all have a great day.
You too.
Okay, uh, at this time, I will move to go back into executive session. And it is, uh, ten twenty-nine.
And why are we going into executive session?
For attorney advice.
On?
On what subject?
The animal shelter. Thank you. Okay, we're back from executive session, and there was no decisions made, Greg, you wanna give a rap?
Uh, yes. We're just to inform the public of what we've been, uh, in, in, in motion, what we put in motion is. Um, we, we wanna finalize the transition, we're in process of finalizing the transition between. The Fayette County, uh, Humane Society and the Fayette County Animal Shelter, which we will currently, um, we currently support. Um, we have to finalize our policies, we have to inventory supplies and equipment. If there are any startup supplies that we may need, we are prepared to do so, and the transition should be. Around, uh, uh, by, by October eighteenth, we should have that transition in place by October eighteenth. And the new animal shelter management will take place, we will, we've got a new plan, a new policy, this is just to inform the people of Fayette County that we have not forgotten our animals. That we have not forgotten our obligation, that we must move on, and our first obligation was to the animals. It will now be called, uh, as, as of October eighteenth, it'll be called the Fayette County Animal Shelter. And if anyone would like to help with the transition, to help with our, our volunteer, contact. The courthouse, uh, five seven, three oh four, five seven, four twelve hundred, that is our base number. Uh, then go to the county commission, they will take you to our county administrator, and our county administrator will give you information of how you can volunteer or donate. To our animals of Fayette County, we would greatly appreciate it, and we would, um. We, we, we appreciate the concern and the, uh, participation that we had in our previous meeting dealing with this subject.
All right.
Anything else? Anything else?
Nope, that's it, so I'll motion to adjourn.
Second.